Good morning and welcome to the City of Rapid City Planning Commission for April 6, 2017. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda, there are speaker request forms at the table along the left wall. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak to and hand it to the staff seated on the left of the dais. At this time, we would also like to ask that if any member of the audience has a cellphone or other electronic device, that you please either turn it off or turn the ringer to silent. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so the meeting is not disrupted. Items 1 through 3 have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of the planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision. Are there any items 1 through 3 staff would like removed? Any items 1 through 3 that any planning commission would like removed? And are there any items of 1 through 3 that any audience member would like removed? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion on items 1 through 3.
Second.
Karen made the motion and Commissioner Sullivan seconded that motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 4. Karen is going to recuse herself from item number 4.
Good morning. This is an application to amend an existing tax increment district financing plan. The district is number 54 and it was created in 2005. This is an aerial photo from that timeframe. And the district was created generally in this area. It's east of, west of Haynes and north of Mall Drive. Mall Drive is down here, farther south. And this is a photo from 2015. It shows the additional development that has occurred. There's been some here and then along Bunker Drive. This district was created to, just a little bit of history on how an actual tax increment district works. The base value is established when the district is created. These tax increment, these revenues always go to the taxing entities that we have in our area. And then when construction occurs, there's a new base that's determined just based on the improvements that are done. And this area in here is the amount of the increment or the tax revenue that goes toward paying for the public improvements. As of the end of 2016, the anticipated revenue for this particular district is $422,000. This was the base valuation in 2005 when the district was created. This is the year-end valuation at 2016. So that's $28.1 million increase in taxable valuation. And here are some pictures of the site. This is looking from Catherine to the north northwest. This is one of the public improvements that was created. Originally, when the district was created, the city had thought that a well was going to be sufficient. But during the discussions and development of this plan, the city did request an amendment in 2008 to change the well to a tower that you see here. Here's another one of the improvements. This plan also participated in funding portions of the Vicki Powers Park. We have a new booster station and then, of course, you can see the water tower in the background. We also had installation of two water mains in bunker and then up to the tower. And here's our public improvements map. We did the reservoir, we did the booster station, some water mains to ensure some looping and then the water main in bunker drive here. And this is really what we're trying to do today. Here is the original project plan in this column. It's still valued at 4, 1, 5.1 million dollars. We're making some revisions. And the revisions that we're doing today are only to bring the estimated costs in line with what was actually expended. We're not doing any more new improvements. All of the improvements that were proposed with this district have already been completed. And now they're just going to certify so that the rest of the cost can be paid out. I know this is a very busy chart, but this is the first loan that was paid off. This is the second loan for phase 2. And this is now what we're working toward getting paid off. And we do anticipate that this district will be dissolved sometime in mid-2023. So we've paid this amount off, nope, excuse me, that's wrong. We've paid this amount off, which was the first certification. There was, there were additional costs that were paid off. And now we're looking at this plus some leftover interest. And everybody wants to know, you know, about how long does it take for our tax increment districts to pay off? State law allows for a 20-year timeframe. Our average is 9.78 years. And then there's always a question on how many districts we still have outstanding. This was at the end of 2015. But today, at 2016, we are at 2.9%, 2.95%. And that includes all of the districts that have been approved to date. And the reason that's important is because state law allows up to 10% of your total valuation to be included in a TIF. We're at less than 3%. And again, here's a picture of the existing development. And what I'm going to do is go back to the chart that shows what they're trying to do. So they're moving dollars around to accommodate these final numbers. But with that, we do, the Tax Improvement District Committee did recommend approval of this amendment. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Patsy. I don't have any lights up, so I'll just, last one. Do you have kind of a quick and dirty summary of where the money's moving from and to? Seems like we got some great improvements out of this, but I'd just be curious.
So the water main in Bunker Drive was not quite 40,000, less than they anticipated. The water main extension up to the reservoir was a little more costly. That's up to 3, 600,000. So we've moved 285,000 into that line item. The grading was removed, actually, excuse me. There were no changes to the grading, no changes to the park improvements, no changes to the booster station. The water well was removed totally. The reservoir was still at 675,000. There were some increases in some of the professional services. And then the booster station was a little more costly. And then the interest has decreased. So did that help?
That's perfect. Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the commission? Look for a motion then, I think.
Make a motion to approve?
Commissioner Sullivan made the motion to approve. Give him a second. Commissioner Schmidt seconds that motion. Any further discussion on the motion to approve on the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 5.
Item 5 is a final plan development to allow auto sales for New Rice Honda location. Property is located on southeast corner of East Mall Drive and Outfitter Road. North of 90, it's Stone General Commercial District, a planned development. Currently, the property is void of any structural development. Discovery Circle, Outfitter Road, and East Mall Drive are all being, are there in place and will be proposed access from them. Feature land use shows the property is suitable for mixed-use commercial and East Mall Drive is turning into this sort of a commercial slash industrial corridor and the proposed use fits into this area. East Mall Drive is also identified as a principal arterial street. Here we have the proposed site plan. Proposed building is approximately 58,800 square feet in size and is for showrooms, service area, storage, and offices. Rice Honda sells and services ATVs, motorcycles, utility vehicles, scooters, snowmobiles, watercraft, and trailers. The applicant is requesting one exception to waive the requirement to provide parking landscape islands. As you'll notice on their site plan, their landscape plan, they're providing a rather robust landscaping along the perimeter of the property to deal with, to provide that aesthetic appeal coming into the site. The applicant has indicated that the required landscape islands would cause issues with circulation and snow removal. And because of the proposed landscape plan, staff is recommending that the exception to reduce the number of landscape islands from four to zero be granted. The applicant has also indicated that at rally time, they will have a setup on the south side of the parking lot and they are providing sufficient parking for the proposed use and still having this area reserved for trucks and tents. They'll just have to get a temporary use permit prior to those events each year. Proposed sign package, there are no electronic reader message boards proposed. This didn't come out very well, but around the rear of the property is a proposed eight-foot metal fence, which is in compliance with the zoning ordinance. Elevations of the building and signage on the building and other elevation of the building. This is looking from East Mall Drive south into the property. The sign is posted on the property. You can see 90 here in the, to the south. This is looking along East Mall Drive to the west and to the east. This is looking at adjacent, here's the visitor's center and hotel to give you an idea of what's in the area. Tractor Supply Company located across the street to the north and other businesses in the area. And this is looking to the west at the, another hotel, Cabello's here in the rear and Sickie's, a new restaurant. Looking south on Outfitter Road toward 90 again and from Outfitter Road looking towards East Mall Drive and that intersection. And then looking from Outfitter Road east across the site. This is a good project in a developing commercial corridor. The use fits with other uses being developed in this area. And staff is recommending that the final plan development be approved with stipulations noted in the staff report. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Thanks, Fletcher. Not seeing any. I don't have any. I think it's a good project. Excited for it. All right, Karen made the motion to approve with stipulation.
Second.
Kim seconded that motion. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Item number 6.
Good morning. This is another application for tax increment finance district to create the district. This is an appeal from the Tax Increment Committee. They had a two-to-two vote to deny this motion. You've seen this application or a similar application on this property before. This is called The Village on Monroe. It's at Dilger and Monroe Street. Again, we have information on how a tax increment district works, except the graphic is gone. Glad you guys saw that earlier.
One thing to note with this particular district, because it is a residential district, the taxing amount is at an owner-occupied rate. And with a residential district, the difference in the revenue generated for this district that the school district would actually receive is made up by the residents, the property owners within the entire school district. And that's about, with this particular district, the amount that would be made, have to be made up every year is 5,200. So it's a very minimal amount that anyone would see on their tax bill. Well, there you go. There's that little chart. We estimate the value of this property, this entire district, to be 26,500 with the revenues to be at about $10,000 per year. One of the reasons why you guys are seeing this particular application on an appeal is our existing tax increment policy identifies that if the TIF committee denies the application, the applicant has the ability to appeal that decision to this body. If you guys decide that this is a worthy project and want us to move forward, then staff will create the project plan and bring it back to you for a public hearing as required by state law. So your decision today is just either to over-appeal the TIF committee's decision or uphold it. So here are the existing values from 2008. We have information back to 2008 in what the land and the structures were valued at. In this particular year, there was a fire on the structure that was on the property. And today, or at year-end 2016, it was valued at 78,000. However, at the end of 2016, the structure was demolished. So the value of this particular lot is down to 26,000 because there's no structure. So that does show a 70% decrease in valuation. And so this is what the applicant is proposing. They have a total project cost of $662,000 and they are requesting TIF funds in the amount of 62,000 plus interest, which would be about $87,000. It's about 13.2% of the overall project cost. And you've seen these photos, but this is the elevation looking from Dilger to the south. And the site plan, there will be five workforce, affordable workforce housing units. Three of them will be two-bedroom units and two of them will be one-bedroom units. Here's a picture of the site looking to the southwest from Monroe Street. A picture from Dilger looking to the northeast. And then looking from Dilger along Monroe to the east. And here is the amortization schedule. If the district is approved, it would be generally probably approved the first of June, maybe a little later depending on the timeframe. Here's the schedule that identifies that it would pay out within 10 years with the estimated revenue from the projections that were received with the application. At about 10,000, a little more than 10,000 per year. And so again, because this is the critical piece, is, you know, what is it going to cost the taxing entities? And it would be the $10,000. However, this amount here will still be paid to the school district because it's a residential district, tax increment district, instead of a commercial. And so here are your options. The first one is to overturn the TIF committee's denial and direct staff to prepare the project plan. You still have the opportunity to weigh in on the plan as a whole or your option is to uphold the TIF committee's decision and deny the motion. The applicant does have the right to resubmit in 30 days if that's the case. But with that, if you have any questions?
Thanks, Patsy. Questions, comments from the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to explain why I recused myself from the first TIF that we talked about earlier and why I'm not recusing myself from this one. I previously had been helping the city with some tax increment district plans and some items from that perspective. Currently, I'm not doing that anymore, so I'm no longer working with the city. So the first one, I did have some info in, so I obviously recuse myself from that one. This one I have not done anything with, so I'm not doing that with this one. So on the item that we're talking about, I think affordable housing and workable housing are both things that the city's been really working on to, to get in place. And this is one item that will allow homes to be built and have some reasonable costs for the homeowner. So I think this is a project that should go forward, at least to see and make sure that, that the public can see what's out there and give them a chance to go forward with this project. So I think the appeal is warranted and I think we should appeal that, especially since it was a two-to-two vote at the committee and there was not a lot of discussion on, on that. The other thing is that, I think there's a couple of questions and maybe Patsy can answer some of those that did come up at the TIF committee. And one of, one of them is the cost. And I don't know if you need to get into that. Maybe that's something we should get into when we actually, if we do approve the project plan. The one question I will ask though is, because this is a property and our guidelines say that we aren't supposed to approve project plans with the property, did they go to the city council after this, if we appeal this and agree with that appeal? Or do, how does that work?
This last Monday, council approved authorization of them moving forward with the land acquisition cost.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't know that. Okay, that's all the comments I have at this moment, so.
What was some of the dialogue? I mean, why did they not come to agreement on approving it at the TIF committee?
I think Steve's are rep, right? So maybe Patsy can share.
There were only four individuals there and I think the school district was concerned about the residential tax increment district. But he did not, he did not say. That's my opinion because he's, they didn't really have a lot of discussion, as Karen said.
I got a speaker request form from Kent Haig.
Good morning. I'm Kent Haig, attorney at Whiting Haig &amp; Haig Law Firm and not representing this matter or anything like that. I'm just basically here as a private citizen. One thing I have been, or become keenly aware of is the, over the past few years in working on a project to address affordable housing, workforce housing in this town, is the abject need for it. And also how that fits into the landscape of the entire city and not only affecting its people, but also taking care of areas that truly meet the definition of blight statutorily. And this is a block that would be clearly improved, an area, a microcosm that would be truly improved while still offering or helping to offer a bit of relief or a bit of help to the affordable housing need. And because of that, I would strongly urge you to support it. It's, the size of this TIF is very small. It's minimally intrusive. But I think it sends out a strong message that these small areas of blight are being very aggressively looked at and our, our need for affordable housing is being very proactively looked at. And we're willing to do what we got, we can do, each little battle at a time to win the war. And I think this is a, this is a, I'm very familiar with this project. I'm familiar with not only the entities that are involved in it, but also the Marshall Goodman-type homes that are very nicely designed, in my opinion. So I would urge you to support it. It's, it's a minimal gesture, in my opinion, for the city to make to promote these worthy causes. Thanks.
Thank you. Karen?
Thank you. I just had one other comment. This is also, you could say this is an infill development, which is something that is really something that, that tax increments are meant to do. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve this item to move forward with their tax increment request.
Just to clarify the motion and Patsy correct us if we're wrong. What we're, we're overturning the TIF committee's denial and directing you to move forward to bring back a project plan? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, then that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay.
I second it.
Commissioner Sullivan seconds that motion. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. I think we're up to discussion items, staff items, anything? All right, quiet meeting. What's for motion to adjourn? All right. Karen made the motion, and Mike seconded that motion to adjourn. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.